Good morning, everyone. Today's Thursday, July 29th, 2021, and we're here for a work session. And as always, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ken, can you please take the lead?
Yes, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Unfortunately, today, due to the weather forecast, this evening's Alive on 25 has been canceled. And the next Alive on 25 will be on August 12th and August 19th. And it's unfortunate, the last Alive on 25, we had record-breaking attendance and we had a ton of vendors. This time around, we're going to add a Kid Zone, and it's expanding, and it's a great time, I agree.
I enjoy it, of course. Looking forward to it. Sorry, it's not happening today.
Yeah, unfortunately, I really was looking forward to that.
We'll make it up.
We'll make it up. Many of you have heard that, may have heard, that the town had received an increased credit rating. Moody's upgraded us from AA3 to AA2. This upgrade is attributed to the town's much-improved reserves, as well as declining debt services, us addressing the budget appropriately. And last month, we received from the state comptroller their audit on our town assessing the shortfalls of our budget. And there's nothing wrong with it. They thanked us, and they told us to keep up the good work. And a month later, we see Moody's, and this is big for our town. Thank you, Moody's.
All this during the time of the pandemic?
Yeah, that's right, under the pandemic. And it's very enlightening to see that we are becoming quite stable, stabilize our funds. So, and we're going to move on forward. And our first discussion item today, Ken Rothwell, would you introduce the topic to us, please?
So today, we have the Riverheads Independent Audit Committee here. And first, I just want to thank the entire audit committee for all their work, led by Jack Orban, and all the members on the committee that are joining us here today. Our residents should know that the Audit Committee does this work on a volunteer basis for the betterment of our community, and they've worked countless hours for the simple desire to protect our residents, our taxpayers, and town employees. And so, we thank you for your work. I always thought that the audit simply consisted of financial numbers and receiving of expenditures or funds, but in audits, much more complex. They do cover finances, but also procurement procedures, employment protocols, equipment logs, work practices, and procedures are just some of the things they review, and much, much more. And so, it's quite an in-depth detail in audit. Last time, the audit was on the agenda, there was a general misunderstanding on my part, and I think most of the members of the town board would agree as to the presentation. I'm not faulting the Audit Committee. I've just learned about the independent nature of the audit is not a back-and-forth, but a detail of the progress, what was reviewed, recommendations, and the purpose and goal of the recommendations to better our government. I think our Highway Superintendent, Mr. George Woodson, as we call him, G.O., deserved an apology for the way the work session unfolded. I think that the town board had a misunderstanding regarding the independent audit process and about what was to be presented at that time. I think we all thought that there would be an update and presentation of financials, but the conversation kind of went on a question-and-answer interaction without content for us to review at the time. The Highway Superintendent has served the town for 36 years, and with more than a decade as Highway Superintendent, during his term, there has been changes in laws, purchasing laws, purchasing agents for the town, and ever-changing budgets, and the past two years, serious budget constraints townwide. It would be impossible for anyone to field questions dating back three, four, or five years ago without researching his own records. I know from speaking to G.O. that he's proud of his service, and I know that the community is proud of his service. He has a reputation to solve problems and make every efforts to work within the town and everyone within the community. After 36 years of service to the town, G.O. on December 31st will officially retire from serving our town, and I wish him a happy and healthy retirement. With that in mind, some may ask why this audit right now. And I'm told that each audit within the town's department is selected by random. One year, the Building Department, one year Municipal Garage, and the Highway Department were selected last year. I can't imagine it's easy to run the Highway Department, coordinate crews, projects, and purchases, and maintain equipment to manage the finances. I know he's worked very hard and deserves thanks and credit for his years of service. It's important to know that I have not been given a copy of this report until today, nor any member of this council or the supervisor has seen the financial final report until now. So with that in mind, I'd simply ask Mr. Orban to present the report to us and allow us to take our time to read the contents over the next few days before we exchange on a question and answering or a public forum. I am certain that each member of the town will certainly follow up with Mr. Woodson on any questions, concerns, and for that matter, perhaps a good praise for his work. And for the extent of the Audit Committee's recommendation changes, I'm confident we can collectively, town board and Highway Superintendent will commit to implement those changes. And so, now I'd ask Mr. Jack Orban and his committee if you could come forward to present what your findings are. Present us with a copy of the audit.
And Tim, you asked, we will make a copy after the work session, okay?
If you want to come to the table, where do you think?
There's tons of room.
Good morning. How are you?
And I guess maybe if you just introduce something, now we have Charlene Cagle Betts, and we have Joel Hockett. If anybody wants to just maybe introduce themselves.
Welcome back!
They should be back.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
First of all, to the members of the council that are here, I'd like to introduce the committee to you. I'm sure you know them, but at any event, the volunteer members of the committee are Joel Hockett to my left, to his left is Ernie Anderson, to my right is Ron Polito and Charlene Cagle, who represent East End Accounting. East End Accounting, by resolution of this town, is hired to help us do our work. Together, we represent the Independent Audit Committee. I did want to say a few things before we get started and present our findings to you. I agree, Councilman Rothwell, that the last meeting I would label as being awkward. It turned out to be a referendum on this committee and not the Highway Department for some reason. Nevertheless, that's behind us. But I did want to give a little history of how this audit has unfolded and how it's compared to other audits. Our general protocol is for me to go to the department head and tell them, him or her, that we are going to conduct an audit of their department. I did that with the Highway Department Superintendent. Let me tell you what he told me at the time we met. First of all, I found him a very personable guy.
He is.
We laughed and chuckled a little bit. He talked a lot about his family, his history, and his commitment. But he said, quite specifically, that he had disdain for this council. He did not believe that the council really understood what went on in the Highway Department. I am not making this up, and I am not embellishing this. These are his points of view that he expressed to me. I never asked him to talk this way. And he went on and on about the fact that the trucks that they have, the details of what kind of truck it might be and how it would be used, that the average council person wouldn't have any idea how to evaluate whether they were right or wrong. I was quite surprised because other department heads we go to never talk this way. He also told me explicitly that he would avoid using the procurement policy of the town to buy equipment for the town of Riverhead. I was surprised he told me that, but he was very specific about it. He even told me where he went to buy the trucks and how it happened, and at what auction he went to, and was very proud of the fact, in his mind, that he was able to save the town money, buy a better truck at a reduced rate, or whatever it might be. So I left. As was the custom, I wrote him a personal note and thanked him for the time he spent with us and told him we appreciated his cooperation as we began our audit. And so, we got started. It was a difficult audit in the sense we were coming right up against COVID-19. It was very difficult. Our own schedules, we're volunteers, some of us go away, COVID, we couldn't get where we... The audit dragged on for some time, unfortunately. Most of our audits go fairly quickly, a long period of time. And I'm getting to the point where we got to the last meeting. There was some sense of urgency that I was getting from the town, that what's happening to the Highway Department audit? Why is it taking so long? So we met and agreed that we would give you a preliminary report on what we found, and that was the purpose of that meeting. This entire staff was on a Zoom call at the time. I was there in person. We intended to give you the highlights of what we had discovered. That never happened. Two things did happen, however. It was decided that the way we were behaving as a committee was not fair to the Highway Department, that traditionally, the committee would go to the department head and share in an overview way what the findings of our audit were. We were skipping that step in this case. The reason was that we felt that there was some pressure building to hear what we were doing. As it turns out now, that was probably a mistake to come before you, because we never got around to telling you anything about the Highway Department audit. We debated for some time whether this was fair to the Highway Superintendent to come and talk to you about what we found. And let me just pause here for a minute about audits. Audits are not subjective things. They're not the opinion of the people that sit here. When we do an audit, we write down what we find. Now, it's possible we can make a mistake when we write it down, but auditing is a very objective business, and it's intended to be that way. There is no quarrel. I've given many of you an example of what I mean. For example, when we were doing the Recreation Department audit, there is a requirement that every boat in the municipal marina have a permit displayed that they paid for so that you can keep your boat there. When the time came for us to audit the boats at the municipal marina, Ron was going to go down and do it, I spoke to him, I said, "Oh, I'll come with you today." So he and I went together. There were permits missing from the boats, more than you might expect. It was not just an accident. So we went back to the department head and talked about it. Now, let me just stop there. The department head may have very good reasons why certain boats don't have permits, but as far as an audit committee is concerned, they're supposed to be there. My point is that this is not a debatable matter. You can give me a reason why the permit isn't there, washed away, they lost it, or any kind of other reason, but the fact is, from an audit perspective, it's missing, and that's what we write down. This permit is missing. The same is true when we went to the Highway Department. So after that meeting, which I regard as being somewhat awkward, and the other part of it, was that there was some suggestion, innuendo, if you will, that somehow we were appearing before this council with some objective other than reporting on what we found at the Highway Department. I didn't quite understand what that meant, and I did send an email to at least one of the council people, asking if they had any evidence that we had some sort of prejudice that they thought we brought to that meeting, to please let us know. We had a good discussion back and forth, and I never heard any further from that council person. I can assure this committee, in the 10 years that this committee has met, we have never, ever discussed politics. I don't know what Joel thinks about this government or any other government. I hope he doesn't know how I feel about it. We have religiously avoided any kind of involvement in the political part of this town, and that's the way it should be. So why that came up, I have no idea, but I have no way of refuting it, since I can't prove that we're independent. I can only tell you with some assurance...
Is G.O. here?
Pardon me?
G.O.? I thought he was coming. You advised him he was coming.
He was informed of the meeting, yes.
He was informed of the meeting?
I called him and told him.
But I think it's fair for him to be here. Can you pull over to him?
Pardon me?
No. Devin, at least he should know what's going on. I'm just wondering why the Highway Superintendent's not here.
I have no way of answering that question.
Normally, he is here, and I think he should be part of this process, the COVID process.
Madam Supervisor, I don't run the town, you do.
I know, though. Exactly.
Would you prefer us to come back at a time when he's present?
Absolutely not. No. Go ahead.
Well, if you feel it's essential he be here, I'd rather wait until he gets here.
Well, he's probably watching. We're just reaching out to him to make sure that he knows. It's just to keep him informed. Continue. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, well, moving along. After that meeting, sort of quite by accident, the Highway Superintendent and I met in a parking lot out here that evening. We talked for quite some time, and I don't wish to share with you what we discussed. Neither he nor I plan to say anything more than what we talked together. I got the clear impression from him that he understood that there were issues in the department and that he felt that they needed to be improved. I thought that was interesting, and it sort of confirms what you're about to find out from this audit. So after the meeting, which was awkward, I instructed our staff to go back to each of the relevant departments, and I sent you an email about this. When I speak of you, I'm talking about the council, that we were going to circle back with the Legal Department, the Finance Department, and the Purchasing Department to double-check the work that we had done, to see if there were any open ends, if you will, in it. They did that. It took quite some time. We discovered that what the town knew about the Highway Department and what our audit showed was precisely the same. The town understood what was going on at the Highway Department. So I mentioned that to Mr. Rothwell, who was then, I guess only recently, Ken, appointed as the liaison to the Highway Department.
Yes.
We had some issues as to whether or not it was the right thing to do for our committee to go back and talk to the Highway Superintendent about what we had discovered, for the reason that the town, in our judgment, already knew what was going on in the Highway Department. We are not in the management consulting business. If we were to return and talk to the Highway Superintendent about what we found, when that information was already on the records of the town of Riverhead, it would put us in a very awkward position, which I didn't plan to be in. So Ken said, "Fine. Why don't we get together with a supervisor, a representative of the Legal Department, one of, I believe, Ms. Aguar's staff, and myself, and talk about this?" I think you would agree. At times, it was a somewhat contentious meeting. We discussed a lot of things at that meeting, and it was finally agreed that Mr. Rothwell would sit with our committee and learn more about what we had found, and if he felt good enough about it, he would go back to the Highway Superintendent and talk to him about it. That is precisely what happened, and we appreciate your efforts, Ken. So that's where we are. Back to the meeting that we had with Ms. Aguar, Mr. Rothwell, Ms. Prudential from the Legal Office, myself, and another staff member, and at the meeting we had with the Total Council, I mentioned that as part of our work, we had interviewed a resource of the Highway Department. We explained that during that interview, we talked about how the Highway Department was procuring items for that particular vendor. The vendor mentioned that they also invited the Highway Superintendent to golf outings. This was mentioned to the council, and it was mentioned at the meeting I had, and I'll just mention with the supervisor, which included the other people. I guess I expected, as a result of that, a single interview with one vendor, that there might be some curiosity as to whether or not there were other vendors that might be saying the same thing, and whether or not there should be an ethics investigation opened as a result of learning that information. As far as I know, nothing has ever happened as a result of that. Has there, for example?
No, not that I know of. Somebody has to bring the claim forward, and we don't have the results of the audit, and we have... Rothwell is the liaison, and he should be pursuing.
All right, fine. At that same meeting, I brought up the issue of the policies and procedures of the Highway Department with those people. Among the items on the policies and procedures sheet was this: A member of the Highway Department can borrow equipment from the Highway Department for personal use. The legal representative from the law offices of this town at the time said, "That is illegal." I didn't know it was illegal, but it seemed odd to me, not because it's illegal, but if you allow a member of the Riverhead staff to take home a piece of equipment that belongs to the town of Riverhead, let's just say whatever it is, and somehow somebody gets hurt as a result of using that, the town is open, in my judgment, to significant liability, which they shouldn't have to face. I don't know what has happened as a result of that.
I did discuss him. He said it was an oversight, and he corrected his policy in that there are no borrowing of highway equipment by...
That item on the policies and procedures was an oversight?
He just, I think he was thinking on a small level, if somebody needed help with something, you know, and not, it was not perceived that no one was certainly going to buy a truck or a vehicle or something and use a traffic vehicle personally.
Okay, well, we're about to finish up here. So I guess the attitude of this committee is that, having audited many, many departments that have gone, I guess in our judgment, but most would agree, I hope, relatively smoothly, this one has not, for a whole bunch of reasons, and let us take responsibility for part of them. But it's also revealed something maybe that's good for the town. The resolutions that created our committee were written close to 10 years ago. We have served three and a half supervisors. I don't mean a half a supervisor in a derogatory way, it's just there was only, they were half the time. So let's call them four supervisors that we have served. Every single councilman that signed the person that signed that original resolution is no longer here. Many of the councilmen, including like Mr. Rothwell, who had no idea, really, when you came in here, what an Independent Audit Committee is supposed to do, you're not expected to, really didn't understand. It's not fair to us or to the council. So my suggestion would be, at this point, and I suggested this in an email to you, Ms. Supervisor, and I think I said it to the other council, maybe it's a good time that we sit down together with the Law Department and talk about the resolution that created this committee, because I think what we need to do is find a way to bridge the gap between what we're doing and have been doing for 10 years and the fact that we have a rotating number of council people that come in that may or may not understand what our protocols are, how we conduct ourselves, and what we're expected to do. So I would say, at this meeting now, it would be a good idea if we put together a task force to go back to the original resolution, members of this committee, members of your team, members of... And see how we can make this a better document, or at least a document that when a new council person comes in, they would read, and maybe we would sit and discuss what we're doing. This work, in my judgment, is very important for this town. There was a reason that this resolution was passed. The work that we have done, not to be boastful, but I will say it anyway, I think has been very helpful to the town. When we give you our report, you can again go back to the department and say, "Hey, look, here are some areas that need to be improved that we didn't know about. Let's try and work better and make that happen." And that's generally been the goal that we've had. So I would suggest that we do that. So now, let us tell you, or have Ms. Cagle tell you, what the results of this audit are. And before we start, she starts, I would say this: Every department head that we go to, I tell them, "This is not a gotcha game."
Great. G.O.'s here. Good morning. Thank you for coming.
Well, he's arrived just in time. We're not here to make people look bad. We're here to help the town understand what's going on in the department. And we have, before we start, one other very important goal, according to the resolution. It is our job to work with the external auditor, to go over the draft of their audit plan. This is tough, long, boring work, page by page, of hundreds of pages that we go over. We do that. We prepare them to give their report to you. As a general rule, we're included when they do that. Lately, we have not been, but that's not a... They're here, they're there. When they're finished, we go over the work that they do. That's part of what the resolution requires us to do, and we'll continue to keep that up. So let me turn this over to this Cagle, who is a certified practicing attorney...
No, public accountant.
CPA is better, and her sidekick, Ron, who actually do most of the hard work. And I'd ask her to give you the highlights of what we discovered, and you can ask questions whenever you want. It is our general habit not to give you this report until we're finished sharing it with you verbally. We will leave it behind. You can read it, you can ask us questions about it, but during this presentation, we would prefer you not to be looking at the document and rather have you listening to Charlene. Your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Orban. So just for the board members, my firm has been working with the town as the workhorse behind the Audit Committee for the past 10 years, I suppose. This doesn't seem to be that long, but I guess it has been. I'm a CPA. I've had over, close to 30 years of municipal finance experience. Ron, also a CPA and an attorney. I think combined, we have probably over 50 years of governmental accounting and internal control procedure experience. Ron does most of the work, and then the two of us confer afterwards. You know, we basically work on compiling our audit report together. So when we were charged with this audit, there were two objectives that the board had directed us to review, two areas of the Highway Department. And the overall objective was to check to see if procurement policies were being followed for the purchase of large equipment, according to state law, according to the town's procurement policy. The additional scope, the objective that was part of the audit was for us to take a review of hiring and firing practices and personnel retention and recruitment in the Highway Department. When we begin an audit, we come up with a scope. Usually, the scope is a timeframe or a, you know, that actually gives good representation of the population of the activity that's happening in a particular department. So what we did in regards to the scope of work is we used a timeframe. So for all the hirings and firings for a two-year period, which I believe was, began in 2018 and ended mid-2020, so it really extended it to about a little over two years. And we also looked at the same timeframe for the purchase of large equipment. We decided, normally when we look into activity, we will develop what our risk is in the audit and come up with a sample size of documents that we will actually pull and audit and test. Because of the fact that there's not so much activity in the area of large equipment purchases, there's not hundreds of them every year, we actually decided to expand it and test 100% of the large items that were purchased through the major equipment. So we began by testing. Our tasks included pulling purchase orders, making sure that there was town board approval on all of the purchases, making sure the proper documentation existed, if there was a state or county contract that was being used, or another municipal contract that was being piggybacked off of. We made sure that that contract was, you know, we reviewed those contracts to make sure that they did include the same information. We also traced it through to actual purchase, the delivery of title, and we concluded with a physical inventory where Ron actually walked... a physical inventory where, um, Ron actually walked around with the Highway Superintendent and inspected and made sure that the, uh, the, uh, the equipment, uh, did actually exist and it was, he physically inspected it. So, um, regarding our report, which we're going to provide to the board, I, I will not read the entire report, I just wanted to say that, um, we tested all of the, uh, the hiring, uh, transactions also. We reached out to the Personnel Department, um, and spoke to Personnel Officer Meg Ferris. She provided all the documentations, the documentation for each one of the, um, hirings, and we found that all documentation was in order and all procedure was filed, uh, followed. The most, many of the positions at the Highway Department are not competitive, they don't come off of a civil service list because they're more trade or technical experience in nature, so, um, the, uh, the, the post, uh, the jobs were properly posted according to, um, the CBA, the, uh, the collective bargaining agreements, and, um, the selection process and interview process is well documented and, um, uh, and we had no findings or recommendations regarding the, uh, the personnel portion of the review. Regarding the highway, um, equipment, and Ron, jump in if, if you want anything to add here. We did test, um, a total of, I think it was twenty-seven, we had twenty-seven in our sample, um, uh, items. And, uh, rather than read through the whole report, I would, I would just touch on some of the findings that we have included, and I would read some of those off. Pursuant to the request of the Riverhead Highway Audit Committee, the following is a list of the five audit findings that are considered the most significant. Number one, a vehicle, highway vehicle number twenty-three is listed on town records as a bucket truck. However, documents inspections, end inspection indicate that it is a tractor. More importantly, the town board approval for the purchase is, was dated after the purchase order date. So, what that means is, the, um, once a purchase order is, is prepared and approved and issued, um, the purchase is approved, however, the, the town board had not yet approved it at their, um, at their meeting. Number two, for highway vehicle number fifty-seven, the Highway Department committed to additions to the originally approved purchase order without a change order. So, um, there was an increase in the price, which was not approved, uh, approved through a purchase order. For purchase of vehicle, equipment with Highway Department numbers twenty-seven, eighty-five, forty-six, the Highway Department submitted requisitions to the Purchasing Department in a total amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. For these requisitions, the Town Board approval number thirteen of two thousand eighteen was given as an authorization, but the Town Board approval was in a total amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. So, the Town Board had approved the purchase of a seventy-five thousand dollar piece of equipment, which was used to expend multiple, uh, equipment items totaling a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, over a hundred and sixty thousand. Number four, during, during the course of our test work, the town's Accounting Department provided information concerning a violation of the town's procurement policy, which occurred in two thousand twenty. Highway had swapped a highway asset with another municipality or vendor for maintenance services without approval of the Town Board. So, um, uh, I believe that, um, the Controller, uh, the Rothwell's office conducts a physical inventory, um, every summer of the, the, the town's assets, and, um, when the person, when the staff went to go inspect this particular, um, piece of equipment, it was not there, and, um, I guess upon further review, it, they were, they were told that it was swapped with, um, uh, for another piece of equipment, uh, without the Town Board's approval. That has since been returned. I believe that transaction's been reversed, so the, the equipment is, is now back in the possession of the Highway Department. That's correct, right?
Yes.
Highway Department provided the auditors with a copy of policies, uh, of the Riverhead Highway Department. Article fourteen of these policies allows for the borrowing of equipment, which allows highway staff to borrow highway equipment for personal use. The propriety, the, uh, propriety allowing this should be considered by the Town Board. Also included in these policies in article fifteen are provisions for the use of safety equipment, but it fails to require the use of seat belts in accordance with OSHA Regulation five A one of the Occupational Safety Hazard, Safety and Health Act. And I think those were the, 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 the major issues that we found. We do have a copy of the report for everyone, and I guess, Ron, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, that's covered. Does the council have any questions of, of what Ms. Cagle has talked about?
Uh, can we identify the year that this audit encompassed?
Sure.
Um, I, I think we've, the scope of, of work started, uh, for all of two thousand eighteen, all of two thousand and nineteen, I believe we concluded in March of two thousand twenty.
Okay, so, eighteen, nineteen?
How was your eighteen, nineteen, and, and partially your?
Three months?
Three months of nineteen, of twenty twenty.
Of twenty twenty.
I am greatly appreciative of all your work, and I thank you for taking time in, so I look forward to receiving the report, and we'll kind of look over it directly and work with Geo and, uh, take a closer look at it.
I, I think Geo should be afforded the opportunity to get a copy.
Oh, absolutely.
And if you don't have enough copies, we'll make a copy for Geo. Um, and the press has requested a copy, and we will give you a copy of it. Just give us a few minutes to make copies.
This is the summary of the findings.
So, uh, Madam Supervisor, the suggestion I made that maybe we revisit the original resolution?
Absolutely, we're moving forward.
Okay. I, I would like a commitment that we do that.
You have, you have our commitment.
Until we do that.
Catherine, do we have the commitment?
Pardon me?
To move forward with, uh, reviewing the policies?
What'd you say?
The independent study.
Oh, I was just giving him a copy.
Oh, yeah.
No, I, I was saying.
She handed me a whole stack.
Okay.
I would, I had suggested that we put together a task force to go back to the original resolutions that created this committee.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So, and, since we have that commitment, I would like to let you know that we're putting the Independent Audit Committee, with the exception of the work we do with the external auditor, on hold until we can get together and discuss how we can work together and understand what each of us are doing.
Well, I certainly think it's always a good idea to update things, and you're saying it's been ten years since that was put into place, so I see no reason why, you know, that couldn't be looked at again.
I think, thank you.
And Jack, one of the things that, um, you and I had talked about early on the process and, and, uh, because I was not, you know, as a new councilman in January, I simply was not aware of all the things that, that, that you did within the audit, and so, um, I liked the idea when you and I spoke of perhaps in the beginning of, of each year, when we have, you know, potentially new, uh, people in position or elected officials, a discussion of, of, here's what the audit does, here's what it consists of. I needed that education from you and your committee, and that's why I appreciated that. And so, I think that should be something more that if we can set up like every two years essentially, when we change over, you know, any, any potential change in, in government officials, the idea of just being able to sit down with you for a few minutes and saying about what you do and the protocols, um, the education that you provided me was great. And so, I just think that would be something that we could potentially put in place for the future.
And thank you for doing that, uh, meeting with, uh, with you, and it's great. We'll tighten this up and, uh, we'll move forward in a cohesive manner. Geo, did you want to say something?
And this, good morning. Geo, here's the narrative, and I need to give it to you guys.
Just the dates and time that they're speaking of. I believe our purchasing officer that we had, Marion, was in and out for two years, in for four months.
Can you be a little louder?
Here for four months, out for six months before, unfortunately, she passed away. That may be an issue that you guys didn't know about. So, um, it was an issue with the deputy supervisor handling, doing POs, and it was a union issue. Meanwhile, all the stuff I need to get done to keep the road safe and keep the Highway Department functioning. Just to let you know on that, maybe that's maybe one of the reasons, um, during that period of time that you guys would know about, that, that our purchasing officer was not in a lot of the time, she was out sick. Did you guys know that?
We, we, we did.
We didn't know it, but we did not look at the exact time periods when she was not in office.
Yeah, that we didn't know. We, we did, we did see that, that, that things became a bit more consistent when there was a new purchasing agent in office, towards the later part of the audit.
So, you're talking probably two years in and out where, I can't wait, um, to purchase the equipment because the person isn't there.
We put that in the report, didn't we? That the, there was a change over?
I thought we did.
Yeah, I think we did.
The other thing that kind of, uh, you guys know nothing about the Highway Department, do you? It's your first audit of a Highway Department, right?
Are you asking us a question?
Yes.
Do we know nothing about the Highway Department?
You told me last time you were here, you never did a, uh, audit on a Highway Department before.
If you would like me to say that we know nothing about the Highway Department, I will. We don't know anything about the Highway Department.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
I know. Well, Ron and I do have some experience with the Highway Department. I served, um, actually, I, I worked here for a period of time, um, as well as the town of Brookhaven as the Commissioner of Finance, Ron was the chief, uh, auditor there, um, and, um, at the town of Southampton as the Controller, so all of those municipalities do have a fire, uh, Highway Department, and I am somewhat familiar with the operations. Not on a day-to-day operations basis, but on the specific of, uh, you know, how equipment is required, et cetera.
Okay, it just, uh, was kind of weird that, uh, when he came to my office, I don't have no reason to lie, done everything by the book, far as I know. But one of the things that bothers me, when he came there, he went specifically to three or four vehicles. I just kind of questioned why that happened, why didn't he start at all? You went specifically to three, three or four vehicles and did that. It's, it's like a setup to me. That's how I felt on it. Instead of doing an overall, you went straight in, it seemed like you targeted something or you were told something, and that's what you did.
I don't recall doing that, Geo. I mean, I, we, you spent a lot of time with me, and I appreciated it, and we went from one yard to the other, and I thought you looked at a lot of the equipment, including what was inside and what was outside.
Can you speak up?
I, I, sorry.
It's okay.
I, I, you know, I think that the two of us covered, uh.
You were there for quite a few hours, right?
Yeah, we were there the better part of the morning.
But you didn't look at just three or four vehicles.
No, we didn't. And I frankly, you know, I, what we found, I mean, I, were really, I, I didn't find, think we found any substantive exceptions. There were record-keeping things that, uh.
Okay. And therefore, that, that goes back to the two years when Marion was out sick, and, and I still, as an elected official, have to have equipment to do my job. As far as seventy-five thousand dollars, I don't know if you knew this, but, um, ten years ago, the board authorized me to spend seventy-five thousand dollars, um, out of my budget on equipment without town approval. Did you guys know that?
No.
That's all.
Geo, I just want to say that I know that running the Highway Department is certainly no easy task. And, um, takes great management to run the department. You've done that by following codes, laws, protocols, finances have been the key, and you often are faced with the question, do you hire an outside firm, or do you have enough crew to do a job? Do you purchase new or used equipment? Do you buy something at auction or swap it out for another government agency? How fast do you need the equipment? How fast can you get it? How do you proceed? It's never a simple process, Geo, and, 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 uh, sometimes it's often complicated. But I believe that you have always put the taxpayers first, and it's my hope that the next Highway Superintendent learns, uh, from all of your, uh, practices and from the materials in this audit, um, that we've learned, uh, to be successful in the future. You've done a great job, and I do commend you for all your work for years here in the town, Geo.
Best of luck, and thank you for your service, Geo.
And also, I thank the audit for all of your work and everything that you have done for us as well.
Were there any other people on the committee that wanted to weigh in on anything or make a comment on anything?
Okay, I'll, uh, hold on.
Only that, I think Geo misunderstood what was going on when he asked about the highway, do you know about the Highway Department, and what they do? He wasn't here to understand what the audit does. It wasn't a targeted situation for anything. It's what an audit is, audit is do, is they go in and look at certain types of equipment. And I think he would have benefited from Jack's, uh, beginning scenario of what we do. So, that's it.
Thank you very much for your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you for all that you do for our town. All right, we're going to move on, the next proposed, uh.
Thank you, Ron. Sorry, Charlene, I forgot that you were a CPA.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda.
I want to thank you guys, I know you're volunteers, thank you for your work, and I also want to thank Geo for his years of service.
Yes, we do. Best of luck. Next, we have another proposed change to the town code today. We're going to discuss, um, New York State pet legislation, and that's going to go to Rothwell.
So, what we're doing is, uh, we've looked at amending chapter two oh seven in the Riverhead Town Code. This is really, uh, an attempt on our part to lead by example and prevent, and stop puppy mill operations. And so, um, it's a proposal for prohibition of sales on commercially bred dogs and cats in the pet store. This is to promote animal welfare and encourage the best practices in breeding and purchasing of dogs and cats. So, what we're really trying to do is, um, create a certificate of source, so where are the animals coming from, where's the dogs and cats obtained from? This does not in any way affect in terms of the standard adoption procedures of our animal shelter, but it does, um, um, help guide us in terms of, uh, where animals are bred specifically for sales and high volumes and brought into a puppy store, and that's how we create the puppy mill. And so, um, the certificate of source is a key component in this. Bob wrote the legislation off, you want to share a few things with us, Bob? Just to talk briefly about it as well. But I think it's, um, by having the certificate of source, kind of will prevent these puppy mill operations from going to. And it's, and then so, just to clarify one thing, I can say, it's not that somebody can't purchase a purebred dog from another facility, but you would, you'd know the facility, you go directly to the facility. This really prevents from somebody taking a large amount of dogs and bringing them to a store, um, and, and more of an inhumane manner and selling them at, in, on a, on a gross level.
Good morning, Bob.
Good morning, uh, Town Attorney Robert Kozakovich. As Councilman Rothwell's pointed out, the, uh, the proposed legislation, which we're looking to bring forward, would, uh, essentially eliminate the ability of, uh, uh, pet stores from acquiring pets from puppy mills, as they're, you know, sometimes referred to. I, I, when I originally was looking at this, I noted that a number of other jurisdictions in the state of New York, as well as around the country, have adopted similar legislation, some longer, some, some, uh, more lengthy, some shorter. And, and, and I was having a little bit of a struggle because it seemed to take out what you just referred to, which is an individual like myself who's looking to acquire a pet and, uh, you know, feels that they're doing the right thing. In, in my instance, uh, I wanted a German Shepherd in the worst way, because that's what I grew up with, so.
You have one, though.
And I had one. I contacted my sister-in-law, who was a canine cop at, in Boston, and I said, where do I go to get a real good German Shepherd? And I found, uh, a breeder out in Ohio, and I got my best friend. He passed last year. But this is not stopping that. This is, this is, this, and, and in fact, those breeders who are not up, up breeding them, overbreeding them, or, or doing the wrong thing, deal directly with the consumer. So, that avenue was, is available, will remain available, is not being impacted by legislation. What we're looking to do is, is, is to, um, ask the public whether they support the legislation and whether they support the concept that, um, puppy mills and those who do not treat their dogs and cats, um, pets humanely, uh, don't have an outlet for them at, at a store. And that's what we're talking about. Still be able to acquire, you'll still be able to acquire a dog directly from a shelter, you'll still be able to, uh, acquire a dog from a reputable breeder. A store that's selling dogs, um, if they show a certificate of origin that they've obtained it from a humane society or from a rescue, uh, facility, will still be able to, uh, transfer that pet as well. So, that's, that's the general concept of the legislation.
And thank you for sharing, Bob, because, um, we're in the same boat in terms of, uh, just two weeks ago, I lost my own purebred, and he was Dalmatian, and he's my best friend.
Yeah.
And so, but, we did, we, when we wanted him, I'm a firefighter, I wanted a Dalmatian, every firefighter needs a Dalmatian, and it's just, um, and so, we went to a, a, a location out in New Jersey, they were, had a phenomenal facility in their home, welcomed us, we sat down, and we, we had discussions, and we got to see the complete operation of a private, independent, you know, life.
and we got to see the complete operation of a private independent, you know, licensed purebred breeder. So the potential to get the specific animal, the, the, the pet that you desire is, is always will remain there. This is just preventing those, um, that some mills that are just continuously inbred and under a large thing of just putting out, you know, a, a, a massive number of, of, of pets, you know, for, for the retail and for sale as a business practice, which just I, I, I disagreed with. So I, I, you know, I love the idea of, of licensed, you know, breeding operations that follow all the state regulations. And, and, and so this, I think this documentation is gonna prevent those large sales of, of, of highly inbreds with no documentations of where they're coming from and how they were obtained. And so I think the key component, again, as I mentioned, is a certificate of source that tracks where these animals are coming from and pets. So I thank you for writing this up, because I think the, the town has a chance to lead in this particular endeavor, you know? Uh, the state has a symbol of legislation before them. They have not been able to pass yet. And so I, I think we don't wait on the state. We, uh, we lead by example.
I connected to my phone. I was like, where's that noise coming from?
Great. Thank you, Bob. Catherine, did you have anything to say?
Well, you have to watch.
And, and so what we did maybe clarify is that this sets up for a public hearing, right?
Correct.
So we're gonna change town code. So there'll be further discussion. This is...
That's what the idea is, is to hear what, again, hear what the public has to say, hear the comments. Maybe they might point out something that we didn't, uh, see or think about.
And that's the purpose of a public hearing.
Yeah.
Is to listen to the public.
Yep.
So, and that's great. Another code revision.
Thank you.
In Riverhead, we should, we should have a bell. The last couple of months is coming in, coming in, and it's great.
This is important, especially, you know, pet advocate. I love my, my animals and my children.
Great, so, um... Okay, are we good?
I think so. We'll, we'll schedule a public hearing, hopefully.
Okay.
If we pass the resolution.
Perfect.
Thank you, Devin.
So this is gonna conclude our discussion items for today. And, uh, in a moment, Devin, would you please read the, uh, resolutions? And any council member can add to it and have a discussion if they like on them. Tim, did you get the audit? Alex, did you get the audit?
The, you gave me extras.
Yeah, we have extras here. Yes. Okay.
Okay. So, resolution number one, approve special event, chapter two fifty-five, application for chicken kids consignment event. Resolution number two, approve special event, chapter two fifty-five, application for Long Island Garlic Festival. Number three, approve special event, chapter two fifty-five, app- application for us by us. Number four, appoint Andrea Hill to Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. Number five, appoint Paul Furbek to Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. Number six, appoint Alice Scally Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. Number seven, Plant Five Wellhead PFOS PFOA Removal Project, number eight two zero five zero. Number eight, Norfolk Developers Capital Water Project, number eight two one one three. Number nine, authorizes the removal of fixed assets. Number ten, authorizes the removal of fixed assets. Number eleven, authorizes the removal of fixed assets. Number twelve, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post bid for police uniform items.
Uh, this one, I just want to point out that the resolution is blank, so we need to follow up on that one. It, it has a series of blanks.
Okay, we'll follow up on that.
All right, Bob, would you make sure that that happens?
Oh, I'll take the three. She's out six.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, uh, uh, publishing posting, so it's, uh, coming out of the purchasing department.
Okay.
Uh, it doesn't have the, uh, substance. It just has whereas as it resolves. I'm not sure if, if that was due to Granicus or whether, um, because of a rush to get it out.
Right, okay. And, uh, otherwise, we, we're not gonna move forward next time.
Right. We'll, we'll, we'll see if we can get that corrected, get the proper one to use or buy from a close business one.
Okay, thank you.
Number thirteen, adopts local law to amend chapter two eighty-nine, parking by permit at Forge Road, AKA Dam Road.
Do you want to add to that as we were revising code?
Yeah, no, this is just, uh, regarding, uh, the boat ramp and, and trying to be able to utilize it and not be able to park anywhere. Um, so the, the correction on this will allow them to utilize that by having a permit and utilize the boat ramp that was installed after originally there was no parking permitted anywhere.
Yeah.
When you put your boat in the water, you can't leave your car behind.
This is the one we got the public hearing on at one point.
Yeah.
Yep. And that closed. No?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's closed. Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Yes.
Number fourteen, appoints a justice court director. Number fifteen, ratifies the appointment of a code enforcement officer, Spanish speaking. Number sixteen, acceptance of...
Devin, just give me a second. This is, uh, we're bringing on another code enforcement officer. Um, we have been working very hard with code enforcement recently, and as you notice, we're seeing a tremendous amount of, uh, revisions, and we want this officer to, um, um, have direct, good code. Some of our code is very, very archaic, and sometimes I believe it conflicts, Bob. Some of it conflicts with the state, correct? Such as the housing and the rooms and...
Well, we, we already addressed that with the Part Five legislation, um...
This is gonna prevent, this will allow us better communication by Spanish-speaking code.
This, this is to... This is to give us an additional person, um, who we interviewed with, um, I can't remember exactly when we interviewed, but...
You had, it was like it's been a few weeks ago.
We met with three ca- we met with three candidates, um, thought they were all pretty good. However, the, the gentleman who is the, uh, person here, um, is, is former military. Um, he made a great, uh, presence. He spoke well. Um, I have a lot of confidence that he will be able to hit the ground running, um, and, and that he'll do a good job. Um, he, he is, of course, been, uh, approved by Suffolk County Civil Service as Spanish-speaking, so that he is, uh, multilingual. And, uh, you know, we're looking forward to, uh, adding him to our team.
So I'm in agreement. We were, I was part of the interviewing, and we did see all good candidates. And this is, you know, adding a person to our department, and this, it's good that we were able to get a Spanish-speaking person there.
And he's much needed here as we move our code forward.
And they have, it's, it's good to revise all the codes, but the communication needs to be there as well, uh, to, to deal directly with our residents. So it's an important aspect that we, we have in place now.
Okay. Number sixteen, acceptance of funding for the CDBG twenty nineteen COVID Cares Act Round Number Three.
So I just had one question about this. I, it was my understanding that there was a committee put together that would make a decision as to how these, this funding, these fundings were being spent, so I didn't...
This is, this is coming from the CDA, not from the, uh, Cares Act. So why don't we get Dawn here, please? And we can get Dawn. Is Dawn available? It, it's a separate, it's going right to the CDA.
Well, it says COVID Cares Act.
Yeah, but the CDA component.
Well, while we're waiting for Dawn, I'll just jump to seventeen, which is ratifies the authorization of submission of a competitive grant, and if approved, authorizes the supervisor to sign grant contract award. Number eighteen, ratifies agreement for HGTV episode at Wading River Beach, beachfront bargain hunt renovation.
So I just had a question on that. I did, Bob, we did chat yesterday, and I, you know, I, people wanted to use four spaces at our, um, beach. My concern was that it's a weekend and those, you know, spots are utilized by locals. So I had just asked if they could either be finished by the morning or use the overflow parking lot. Bob, what was the, what was the result of this? I just didn't want them taking spots that people, locals want to use.
Yeah, I had a, a, a lot of back and forth yesterday with, uh, I can't remember her last name, but the first name was Katie. Katie is part of the team, uh, McGilla Entertainment, who is doing the one filming episode for the HGTV episode of beachfront bargain hunt renovation. Um, they actually want to use August first, so the, the resolution should say August first, so I'm going to need to change it. But I had submitted it in with July thirty-first date with the understanding that it could be a rain date of August thirty-first. But they want to use August thirty-fourth with this Sunday morning. They are agreeable and have assured me that they will get there as early as they can in the morning, to be there by eight and be out by noon, uh, on, on the issue of, uh, the amount of time they'll need at the beachfront. That is, uh, on the beach itself, filming the scene for the, for the episode. Um, and, and as far as the parking, they have agreed to use the overflow parking with one caveat and one request back. Um, and that is they are hoping that they could have one vehicle at the beachfront. And the, and the reason they cited, or the reason she gave me, was because when they're not actually utilizing a piece of film equipment, they will be storing it and keeping it in the, uh, uh, van that is part of their film crew. And they would like to have something that's in, uh, eyesight, because the camera equipment and the other items that they utilize are fairly expensive, and, and the, uh, overflow lot doesn't provide them a direct line of sight. So they were hoping they could get the board to agree to allowing them one parking spot, and they would utilize the three in the overflow lot, um, as per the request that you made.
I, I think that's much better. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, so I will let them know, um, that, uh, they, they can proceed Sunday, and of course, we'll ratify it. And then, as I discussed, it would be, uh, basically following the town of Huntington's filming permit ordinance, which says that for a half a day, it's a two fifty charge.
Okay.
All right. And then I, I know that brings me to another point, which we talked about a while ago, which is whether we ever want to consider a filming ordinance. If, if we do, let me know. If not, I'm kind of the default filming ordinance guy.
Actually, still think the cost doesn't seem like that much.
No, no, but I...
Maybe we should have that discussed.
But as I said, that's, that's what Huntington does.
I don't know if that's...
I, I looked at theirs. And I, I know other municipalities have more, and a lot of them also provide for a, a lot of, uh, conditions, such as if police are needed, then there's an additional fee. If, uh, uh, other departments are needed, then there's an additional fee. So it's, it's a sliding scale. It, it depends on...
So that's a discussion maybe we can all have.
Yeah, and I could possibly put together a couple of filming ordinances and what other municipalities do. And again, we can do this informally through agreement. Um, I, I know that the filming permit process would probably help sometimes, because the film crews and, and, and their production schedules are a lot quicker than how frequently we meet. I, you know, in other words, a lot of times they come to me with, with a two-week lead or a three-week lead, and it becomes very difficult to try and work with them. So that has been sometimes an issue. Um, so the film, a filming permit would obviously expedite that perhaps, depending upon who the lucky person is who gets to review those filming permit applications.
Well, you did tell me it tends to be a last-minute thing.
It does.
All right.
I think these events are also quite a little bit of entertainment on a local level. I can tell you that a number of years ago, I was in probably three or four different episodes of Royal Pains, and we filmed out here. It's, it's a lot of fun that residents get to come and watch or participate. I got to be in there, and, and I got to, uh, work with, um, uh, Henry Winkler, the Vons. And so, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, I, I mean...
And Mike, Mike has...
He's still around.
He's still cool. He's very cool.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the exception, and, and I don't know if you remember, a few years back, we had the Water District, uh, property that's up on, uh, uh, Cross River Drive in North, is it Northville? Northville, which was used as part of a film production, which, uh, was the Coen Brothers. That was one instance where the exception to rule, we had a lot of lead time, uh, because obviously it was a bigger film production event. We had closed down roads. They actually used another building on the other side of Northville where they painted it, made it look like a gas station. It was, it was quite a...
It's entertainment for the rest of the county.
It was quite an interesting period of time. And it's great to have the town of Riverhead part of that process.
Yeah, I do think, and, and I do think people probably like it. But I also think since it does come in at the last minute, it's a good idea to kind of, for us to have a plan moving forward.
I, I, I'm fine with that, because it would take some of the pressure off me.
Right. Okay, thank you, Bob.
Yeah, they turn you to the spots.
On the other question, Dawn, I was asking, I knew for one of the COVID fundings, I thought the town had put together a committee that was looking at how the money would be spent. One of the rounds of COVID funding, I thought I had been told that, um, there were some people looking. Uh, one of the town attorneys told me.
Catherine, I, I'd like to add to that.
That there were some people looking into how the funding would be spent.
Yeah, and we haven't received the money. What we did was, um, Dawn, if you remember, we, we had the town attorney, yourself, and both are...
Well, that's the ARPA money. Different, different money.
Right. Well, that's what I was asking.
Different money.
But we didn't get the recommendations from that committee yet, I don't think.
Not yet. Yeah.
Okay, I was just looking, that's an aside, then, that's just other, I was looking to see what they recommend, your group recommended.
Yes, that's not ready yet.
All right, thank you, Dawn. That was my question.
Great, thank you. All right, so we're gonna move forward on that. Uh, Devin, can you continue, please?
Sure. So resolution number nineteen, adopts a local law to update community preservation fund project plan. Number twenty, scavenger waste district budget transfer. Number twenty-one, Department of Land Management budget tran- uh, budget adjustment. Number twenty-two, establishes standard workday for an appointed official. Number twenty-three, promotion of maintenance mechanic, uh, help me with those Roman numerals.
Four.
Four, thanks. Number twenty-four, authorizes town clerk to publish and post public notice to consider a local law to amend chapter two seventeen entitled Building Permit Fees of the Riverhead Town Code.
And on this one, um, I, I know last night I tried to revise the resolution and the public hearing notice, because I had originally, uh, had them for, um, later with a public hearing in September and a, uh, placement in the, uh, newspaper for, I think, the third Thursday in the month. I, I thought the changes had touched, I don't know if you're looking at the resolution now, but it, it shows that, I think, the pu- the publishing date is the twenty-sixth in the paper. It should be the twelfth, which would be next Thursday. And, uh, the hearing, if you are in agreement, would be the second meeting in August, if, if everyone's current. Because for some reason, I, I, I'm not sure, I, I got two email messages that the changes had taken, but I don't see them in this resolution. So I just wanted to apprise you it's gonna change a little bit. Also, it makes reference to the building code, um, and, and that's not really consistent with the language in the chapter. So I'm gonna amend one sentence to say this part, which is the Part One of the chapter. Uh, and then I have one last question for the board. This resolution is proposing to, uh, eliminate fees being in the code and establish them by resolution. We kept the agricultural building fees in there. Seems a little bit inconsistent. Um, and, and I didn't know whether you wanted to take that out and have the agricultural fees also set by resolution, since there's some ins- some insinuation that's the way it's gonna be done. Seemed a little more consistent, but I, I wanted to put it in the way I kind of got it drafted over to me by Andreas without making major changes, so.
I think our discussion in the code revision committee was that, uh, it just makes it easier to proceed in the future to update things by putting all fees.
So then what I would do, so, so then what I would do is I would take that out as well and have that, those fees set per our schedule. Continuing with that discussion, would the board like to have a proposed fee schedule, um, put in the resolution package so that when the public sees what's happening, they can see what the future building fees will be?
Absolutely. That's the goal.
Okay.
Right, and that was my question. I, you know, I, I just want to make sure the way you're doing it isn't like keeping it from the public when the fees are going up.
Yeah, some of the fees...
How will the public know?
Well, that's, that's why I was asking the question. I could put those, those proposed fee schedule in. Uh, we've, we've received, uh, the proposal from, uh, Andreas, um, and I can add that as an attachment to the resolution.
And so the reality is these fees that are being adjusted, the building department fees, last adjustment was two thousand and four, so you're talking about sixteen years. They haven't been revised.
Wow, amazing.
And so we're not making a jump from two thousand and four to two thousand and twenty-one. Um, it was the code revision committee's idea that we would slowly begin to raise them until eventually we can get, uh, to what they should be today. So the fees are a small increase to kind of closely bring back, so it's not a, a harsh impact immediately on, on any contractors. The fees are minimal on small residential projects. These, uh, you know, and then they'll impact more on a large-scale development. Um, and so I think Andreas's work, I believe he has all the fees completed, so we can certainly share that at the public hearing, so people will be able to compare and see what the differences would be.
Well, I, I mean, I would like to...
Wait, so you're, I'm sorry, so you're, the public hearing is where they're gonna weigh into this?
Yeah.
But let's say you put in, you raise fees this year, and, and we pass this. Then how will the public know if the fees, you know, for example, were raised again in a year or so? Are you saying that it wouldn't be...
There, there wouldn't be the, there wouldn't be a public hearing, no. It would just be a resolution.
Mm-hmm. Approved by the entire board.
Yeah, it still gets voted on. It still gets posted by... Yeah, it still gets voted on, it still gets posted, and discussed in a work session, and then goes to resolution.
I mean, I know that our fees were behind. I absolutely know that. I've seen that over the last few years, but at the same time, I just, no, I just want to make sure that when fees are going up, that the community is definitely hearing about it, or the, you know, the people that it affects.
Yep, and it'll come back to the board at any time, so, and the entire board will vote on it, and so.
It's quite, yeah.
It's great, yep, good.
Okay, and Resolution Number 25, authorizes publish and posting of notice of public hearing to consider revisions to chapter 263 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Rental Dwelling Units. Thank you, Devin, and that's it.
Wow, that's a short one. Okay, I think that's it, right? Everyone? Good, thank you, everyone. This concludes our work session for today, and in a moment, I'm gonna ask you to go into executive session to discuss the following. We only have one item for today, and that's a contractual, and it's matters surrounding changes to an agreement outside of council, and that would be our town attorney, Kozakovich. And if you haven't been vaccinated yet, we are urging you to do so. However, know that we do not support, or I do not support vaccine mandate. The vaccines are readily available at every pharmacy, and we urge you, and if you do not have, if you're not vaccinated and you're in a public building, you need to wear a mask, and we hope everyone remains safe. And again, if the seniors need any assistance, contact our senior hotline in the supervisor's office, and we will get you the vaccination, and even if you need transportation, we will provide that to you.
So I just wanted, yeah.
And everyone be safe.
I just wanted to comment on that. Were you finished? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. It is a little concerning, there was a, an article that came out and named out areas where the vaccination numbers are lower, and Calverton was one of them. I think Calverton was around 51%. And, you know, I just urge people to get the vaccine with the Delta variant, which is coming out, which is really very disturbing. I don't remember the exact numbers, but I think it was around 83% of the cases of people that got the Delta variant were not vaccinated. So I do urge people to get vaccinated. Thank you.
Okay. Done? All right, can I have a first and a second to go into executive session, please?
Well, it'll have to be one of us, Catherine. You want to say first?
What'd you say?
It just has to be one of us to get a first and a second, so.
So moved.
Go right, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved, and everyone be safe.
Thank you.
I didn't go along with it, we'd be sitting here all day.
Yes, correct.